At this point, if you would please stand and say the pledge allegiance with.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have a, we have a few announcements tonight and then some introductions. First of all, I would like to introduce our Pro Start students. And their sponsor is Asha Abbott, and she would like to say a few words and maybe introduce the students. Thank you.
I'm Asha Abbott, and these are my Level 1 Pro Start students. Oh, sorry, thank you. So I'm going to introduce them and let them kind of talk about what they created for you guys tonight. So first, I have Mallory Fee, and I have Courtney Larson, and then Leslie Ali. So Mallory, you want to start?
Yeah, so I made strawberry, chocolate-covered strawberries. And it wasn't a new experience for me. I'd made them before, but not with almond bark, which Ms. Abbott provided. And yeah, it was a new experience. The almond bark is made out of vegetable fat instead of cocoa butter, which is in normal chocolate chips. So it goes on smoother, and it's more of like a coating. Yeah, it was, it was really nice, and I'll continue to use it in the future.
I'm Courtney Larson, and I made lemon sugar cookies. It has the taste, the texture, and all of that stuff about the sugar cookies, but with a lemon juice and lemon zest in them. I personally don't like lemon at all, but these were really good. I gotta admit, they were really good.
I'm Leslie Ali. I made the strawberry mousse. And in the bottom of the container had strawberry puree in it. And I mixed the heavy whipping cream and sugar with the puree to get the creamy mousse texture that you guys got, and the strawberry on top to add the appealing look that you guys seen. And I, I liked it. It was pretty good. I hope you guys liked it too.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it, and everything was extremely tasty and very pretty and well-presented. And we appreciated you coming to us this evening and sharing your learning opportunities. So, thank you very much. My other announcement is, the board can, there is an election for the School Board of Education. The election date is April 5th, 2022, and there are two seats that will be open. I will read the various candidates, and if you're in the room, please stand as I call your name. Terry Ward, Josiah Burkolt, Laura Wagner, Dwayne Bausch. Barch, excuse me, thank you for correcting me. Andrew Correio, Daniel Wartek, Susan Hines, and Francis Yang. Young, excuse me. I'm not doing well with names tonight. Thank you. Thank you for coming. We also have a PTA candidate forum. The date for that has been set. That's for March 22nd, 2022. And the candidates will be participating in that. That will be in the boardroom, in this room, livestreamed on district website, and will be from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. At this point, I would ask the secretary to call roll.
Dr. Young. Ms. Reinhardt. Dr. Ward.
Here.
Mr. Stone. Mrs. Gleason Miller.
Here.
Mr. Harrell.
Here.
Mrs. Kalk.
Here. And Ms. Reinhardt is joining us.
I'm here.
Yes, thank you. At this point, I have a motion for approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second from Ms. Gleason Miller. All those in favor of approval of the agenda as presented, say aye.
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 And opposed, same sign. And we have an agenda. Thank you for their approval. We just have two workshop topics this evening. The first is our COVID update. Dr. Hilvitz will provide that. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you all today. I'm more excited than I have been for a while. The news I have is a little different than what I've been presenting recently. I always start with case numbers, and for all those who've been paying attention, our case numbers have been pretty high on a daily basis since we got back from break. We've been averaging a little over 150 cases per day for the first three weeks back. I am thrilled to announce that when we looked at this last week's numbers, we saw a precipitous drop. We're down two-thirds from our average numbers to just above 50 per day. So I'm very excited to be able to tell you about that. Also open to any questions you or the board would like to ask, Madam President.
Questions? Do we have an update on staffing and?
I'd be happy to say that we are definitely trending in the right direction, as Dr. Hilvitz just stated. Today, although it's not great for us, but our fill rate was 79% for our teachers today. So making vast improvements. Yesterday and today, I don't have the exact numbers, but we were in the like 185 to 190 range of subs needed. If you remember, just last week, I was talking to you about upper 200, low 300s. So making vast improvements.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for Dr. Hilvitz or Dr. Gaddy? Yes?
For students who are quarantined or out, is that a certain code that's given for their absence?
Yes, there is. We have a separate code if you are out for COVID issues.
So if, if parents proactively take their children out because there is a student in their classroom that has been notified that they are positive, COVID, they have positive for COVID testing, what is the code for the student if they're not positive, but their parents take them out? Is that counted as a verified absence, or is that counted as a?
So first of all, let me say that we always, regardless of why you may not physically be in school, are working with parents and students to make sure that they aren't missing out on, on their educational opportunities, whether that's connecting with them through Canvas or other means. So I, I just want people to understand that just because you're not at school doesn't mean you are absolved of the responsibility of doing work and learning, and, and that we are going to bring resources to bear to try and help you achieve what you need to achieve. As far as the attendance codes, there are a series of attendance codes, and it depends on how the parent reports the student out. If it's a COVID absence, then we have one specific code that the State Department has us use. If it's a non-COVID absence but still an illness, then it's a verified by the parent as an illness code. Is that helpful? Okay, you bet.
Other questions? Thank you for your good report this evening. Our second item this evening, in which we will conclude most of our time, is the early education update. And Dr. Lawson and her team is going to bring that to us. Thank you.
Good evening. We are incredibly honored and just want to take the opportunity to thank you for the opportunity to be before you in another board workshop to provide you with some really exciting updates regarding early education. Before we dig in, I would like to take this opportunity to publicly thank our early education leadership team, as well as the entire staff that works with early education. The past two years, we have reimagined early education in North Kansas City schools while staying grounded in our mission. Reimagining is hard work. Reimagining in the middle of a pandemic is incredibly hard work. But reimagining is happening, and we are beginning to see the fruits of our labor. There is still work to do, but there is a lot we will celebrate with you this evening. Our celebrations are credited to the people that will be presenting with me this evening, and I'd like to take a moment just to introduce you. So Sarah Monfor, our building principal, Kami Pearson, one of our assistant principals, and Courtney Holt is our other assistant principal. Courtney has officially lost her voice on purpose, so that she will not have to present. But she is here and definitely a huge part of the work, so I wanted to make sure that we recognized this amazing team. As well as, like I mentioned, the staff in terms of teachers, paraprofessionals, custodial crew. It has taken all of us to get where we are. As we begin the board workshop, I would like to draw our attention back to the balanced scorecard. We will be focusing on the two indicators of success created around early education, as well as our goal to continue the expansion of the pre-K program for North Kansas City schools. As we discuss our indicators of success, we will be talking about quite a few programs. We thought it might be helpful just to review all of the early education programs and give you just a little bit of information about each, so as you hear those terms, you'll know what we're referring to. So we all are very aware of our Parents as Teachers program. It's an award-winning program. It's Blue Ribbon Recognized, which is a national recognition. Our success by six is our toy lending library, and we are excited to announce that it is officially open in the Early Education Center. It used to be located in the C-Tech Building. Again, just another awesome example of having that in a central location where we have families with small children coming and going. We currently have seven half-day regular education preschool classrooms. Those are all located at the Early Education Center. In this half-day preschool, the center base, we're currently serving about 256 students. Our full-day preschool is located in seven of our elementaries, as well as our Early Education Center. So we have 15 full-day classrooms, seven locations outside of the Early Education Center, as well as the four classrooms that are at the, at the center. The four classrooms, as well as the 11 classrooms out, all have multiple funding sources, which is a huge celebration. It's one of the first areas we've really broken down some of those barriers. So those classrooms are funded with our ADA or Foundation Formula. There's title funding in those classrooms, as well as local dollars. Our full-day programming, we're serving about 282 students, of which 235 are free. So that's about 47 of our tuition, because we have tuition in those classrooms as well at the center. We also have 18 of our early childhood special ed classrooms. All of those 18 are at the Early Education Center. Not only do we have the early education, special education classrooms at the center, we also provide those itinerant services for students depending on their need. And then the last one to mention is that teen childcare program. That is housed at the Early Education Center, and we are currently welcoming three new students into the teen childcare. Lots of programs. So just wanted to make sure that all of that terminology was reviewed. Like I mentioned, we are going to focus on the two success indicators, as well as our overall board goal. The first indicator of success we will be focusing on this evening is enrollment and participation in Parents as Teachers. As you may recall from the fall, this success indicator is measured by the number of kindergarten students who require academic intervention, according to our FastBridge data. This year, 20% of our current kindergarten students required an academic intervention in the fall. With Parents as Teachers as an early intervention strategy, and by focusing our efforts on reaching those families with high-need characteristics, our goal for the 2223 school year is to reduce from 27% of the students requiring an academic intervention to 17. A few action steps that we shared with you in the fall was to maximize our FTEs in Parents as Teachers to complete over 3,000 visits this school year, serving over 400 families. We also shared that we would take a look at different staffing models to get closer to meeting the DESI-provided quota for home visits. Our third action step was to increase our marketing campaign to promote the program and ensure we are targeting families with high-need characteristics. Courtney Holt was going to share with you about Parents as Teachers, but she has given me the honor to do that tonight. So just a reminder, Parents as Teachers has three main categories: home visits, group connections, and screenings. So we're going to speak to each of those things this evening. Parents as Teachers is a free program for families with children ages zero to kindergarten entry. Our parent educators have been hard at work and have completed over 1,200 home visits during the fall to winter semester, serving around 314 families. Home visits have been a challenge since the new year with cancellations due to illnesses in homes, but we are continuing to be creative to complete home visits. Group connections are events planned by parent educators that provide families the opportunity to engage with their children in meaningful ways and/or create an opportunity for parent education, which focuses on things such as toilet training or positive discipline strategies. This fall, we held a big truck event with community vehicles, as well as a Fall into Fun event, turning our Early Education Center playground into our very own fun farm. We also look forward to our screening team completing over 950 screenings this spring for our early education programs. Our screenings take place currently on Fridays at the Early Education Center. And if you're out and about and you want to warm your heart, feel free to swing by. The second action step focused on parent educators. So this fall, we had three parent educators resign during our first semester. Similar to other departments in our district, we dealt with resignation. And with our creativity, as long as Dr., as well as Dr. Gaddy's hard work, we've put some creative solutions in place. So like I mentioned, working closely with Dr. Sutton and Dr. Gaddy, we were able to be creative with our current allocation of hours. So Parents as Teachers is by allocation of hours. With those resignations, we had about 57 hours that we could be creative with. So we used 35 of those allocated hours to increase four of our current parent educators to be full-time. So a theme that we hear when Parents as Teachers is parent educators often will resign because of the lack of benefits. So by using those 35 hours, those four parent educators were able to increase to full-time, only costing the district the, the increase of the benefits. That increase was about $17,000 for the benefit piece. Parents as Teachers saved thousands of dollars because we didn't have to then train new parent educators with the 15 to 20 hours of training, as well as the $2,000 training cost for each parent educator. Those remaining 22 and a half hours then were used to hire an additional parent educator. We also have continued to research different districts. We call them sister districts, so districts that are like us in terms of their demographics, and just talking about different staffing models and how they best serve their families. We're excited about some of our findings and look forward to acting on some of the new ideas that we have learned. We also spoke to you and shared that we would focus on marketing and connections in Parents as Teachers. Our Parents as Teachers program is currently creating partnership with these community agencies. We are excited about the possibility of the Early Education Center becoming a distribution site for diapers, as well as food, and for hosting parenting classes with the Clay County Health Department on healthy cooking. We have also worked hard to ensure our resources are available through the Clay County Children's Division. We feel these partnerships will further enhance our enrollment for Parents as Teachers, while ensuring that we are reaching families with those at-risk characteristics. Our second success indicator that we wanted to speak about is enrollment and participation in pre-K. In the fall of 2021, we were serving about 758 students in our program. We currently have 876 students, so lots of growth there. This equated to about 55% of automatic qualifiers receiving full-day programming. If you break down the numbers, you'll notice that most of our full-day programming started at capacity. So really, most of our increase has been in early childhood special ed or those center-based classrooms. Our goal was, I'm sorry. So the baseline that we used was that 55% of our automatic qualifiers were receiving that full-day programming. Just to refresh everyone's memory about automatic qualifiers in early education is that they fit into four different categories. So free and reduced lunch is one of the categories. They are, the child was previously in early Head Start or currently in Head Start. The child falls into the neglected or delinquent child category, and/or housing instability within the last year. So those are the four automatic qualifiers that we're really looking at. Our goal for the 2223 school year is to serve at least 70% of those automatic qualifiers with the time and support necessary to be prepared for success in kindergarten. The action steps that we shared with you in the fall regarding this success indicator was that we were going to develop a stakeholder committee to research and develop the priorities of North Kansas City schools' early education programs and our future direction. We also said we would develop and conduct a survey for the families of our preschoolers to gain a deeper understanding of our community's need. The third action step was to create an assessment plan that will allow us to show the growth our students are making during their preschool experience and track the impact of preschool over time. I'm going to turn it over to Kami Pearson, and she is going to share with you about some of our action steps.
Hello. We, the first thing we did was take our stakeholder committee and gather people around so we could get more input from our families and also people that are just involved with our program. So we really focused on what do we know? What, what did we live last year, and what is our current reality? What can we take from those experiences, and how can we refine them to make it even better for our, everyone involved, our students, our staff, our families? We determined that we would just reflect on all the things that we've learned over our session. Our, we came in January into the building and what that was like, and then what this year has brought us. And just look at that survey from parents and staff and reflect on that, and, and what can we do to best serve their needs? So we took our screening data, and we were able to collect lots of information from our families. We had over 1,000 families fill out questionnaires, which I think is a great turnout. And we looked at that data. We have that displayed here. Three and four-year-olds, you'll kind of see a theme there. Lots of families really want full day. Lots of interest in that. We had 77% of respondents express that interest in a full-day program. We had about 23 that are still interested in that half-day that works best for their child and their family at that time. And then overall, we broke that data down by age. Three and four-year-old students, if you see that again, you still see that extreme interest in a full-day service for that age group. And so that's just a consistent theme that we've heard, even this year, talking with families. Is that an option for us? Can we chuck into that? So I know that's something that our families are, are wanting to have access to, based on the information that we've collected from the questionnaires. And so from that, we determined breakout groups. And what is great about our breakout groups is we had lots of different members. We had a board representative. We had elementary administrators. We were on the team. We had special education teachers, but we also had reg ed teachers. So lots of different perspectives on that committee. And we broke that down into looking at kindergarten readiness, programming, screening, and then summer. And that summer piece, looking at also ESY as part of that, and that's that special education piece. So we were very fortunate to have lots of different members on those committees. And so right now, we're still working together as those committees to learn more information and bring that back to the stakeholder group and share what we're learning with the team. And now, I'm going to turn it over to Sarah Monfor, our building principal.
Hello. As we continue to reimagine and refine our work in the early education programs, we really looked forward to hearing from our stakeholder groups. The parent survey was shared with all families participating in an early education program, both those families at the Early Education Center and the school-based classrooms, which are located at seven elementary schools. To ensure that the survey was accessible to each of the families, we offered the survey in multiple languages. The qualitative and quantitative results were plentiful and represented all of our classroom programs. So we heard from the families of early childhood special education students, our center-based half-day, our school-based classrooms, which are the full-day classrooms, as well as our tuition-paid families. The survey statements allowed for responses on a four-point Likert scale. We have a lot to be proud of, as you can see by the mean scores for each of the statements. Our goal was that each parent responded with strongly agree or agree. We were pleased that the mean scores all fell within the strongly agree or agree response categories. The statement, "I am satisfied with the overall preschool experience my child has been provided", produced the highest score and is a source of pride in the work that we are doing within the community. Whether the parents have a student or students at the Early Education Center or at the school-based classrooms in the elementary schools, we received similar results. For the qualitative part of the survey, parents were able to submit responses to two questions. The first question asked about their pride in our early education programs. The data was coded and grouped into themes shared with, that are shared with you today. To be considered a theme, we really looked at the topics that occurred more than 15 times within the total responses. The data clearly shows that our teachers and staff have made a lasting impression on our parent group. We say all the time, we are so proud of our Early Education Center facility. It's beautiful. It's amazing. We're very proud. We're proud of the new additional programming that we're able to provide to our community. But we continue to point out that it's truly the students, the staff, and the community that really make it come to life. We were so pleased that that was the theme that, that was repeated most frequently. One parent shared that the staff have been miracle workers with their two preemie twin boys who have health issues and developmental delays. Another parent, who's also a district employee, recently shared her pride in our tuition-paid programming and considered this blessing that the program has provided to her family. The final comment or question from our survey was, what could we do better to serve you and your preschooler? We've heard from the parent survey and from the screening data last year that many parents are requesting full-day services. We also know that our work to reimagine and refine our building processes and procedures is ongoing so that we can continue to meet the needs of our students, staff, and family. I will now turn it over to Dr. Lawson to continue the presentation.
Using all of the information that Kami and Sarah have shared with you this evening regarding our stakeholder work, as well as what we've learned from those 1,300 families that filled out the questionnaire last year, as well as our survey this year, our stakeholder committee began to focus on the priorities and the philosophy of our program. While we stand grounded on our mission, which is to deliver high-quality, individualized learning opportunities so that all children may be successful lifelong learners, we are working hard to ensure that we are identifying students with limited or no access to preschool within our current resource constraints. Research shows that more daily instructional time yields your benefits for students. Full-day preschool appears to be particularly effective for children from low-income homes. Our community is also asking for more time in the classrooms. With this knowledge, the stakeholder committee considered three different models for the potential growth of our program. Within each model, we discussed the number of students we were able to serve in full day. Within each model, we discussed the number of students we were able to serve in full-day as well as the opportunity to provide multiple options for families. Again, just at the very top, you can see we currently have fifteen full-day and seven half-day regular ed classrooms, and then we have eighteen early childhood special ed and itinerant services. So, one thing to note is that the early childhood special ed classrooms are a hundred percent driven by student need and a hundred percent reimbursable in the rears. So, when we're looking at our growth, we're really focusing on that regular ed piece. Um, our students will drive the early childhood special ed piece. We, as a system, need to determine the growth within the regular ed, so just wanted to clarify that a little bit. So, when we're looking at the larger numbers, just note those are the regular ed side. So, regular ed in terms of title, ADA as well. So, the first and the third models on this chart show an increase in the number of students we would be serving. The middle option on your screen, shifting to all full-day, actually reduces the current number of students that we can serve, but does provide full-day opportunities for all automatic qualifiers. With the information gleaned through our surveys and the work of the stakeholder committee, we are committed to increasing our full-day opportunities as well as providing opportunities for our community with half-day options. By keeping the half-day options, we are able to provide four-year-olds a half-day option as well as our most at-risk three-year-olds the opportunity to be in our program for more than one year. So, currently, our full-day programming is all four-year-olds, and when I say four-year-olds, the year before kindergarten, so they will be four, um, by that August first date. Um, and then our half-day currently serves three or four-year-olds, so those are blended classrooms. Um, and then our tuition does provide the opportunity for some three-year-olds to have a full day. Our full-day classrooms require one full-time certificated teacher and one and a half pair of professionals. The operating expense amount you see on this slide includes transportation as well as direct and indirect costs. Our full-day classrooms provide revenue through that four percent formula. We also included the additional funding sources we have for early education on this slide. So, currently, our Title I preschool budget is around one point five million. Our current ADA estimated revenue for this school year is around one point two million. And then, like I mentioned, that early childhood special ed is a hundred percent reas, reimbursable in the rears. I am, my knowledge from compared to last year, I would never been able to know what I was saying, so I, um, this team has taught me so much and we have learned so much together. So, this breakdown right here is one full-day classroom, so just kind of wanted to share, um, that with you again. So, this revenue then would be twenty, up to twenty students with that foundation formula. That's the revenue piece that we're speaking of there. In terms of percentage, about thirty-seven percent of an additional classroom would need to come out of local dollars.
Can you say that again, please?
Yes. So, about thirty-seven percent of a full-day classroom comes from local dollars. Mr. Fritz, am I wording that correctly when I say that local dollar piece? Okay.
Dr. Law, Larson?
Pardon? Out of our budget.
Dr. Larson?
Yes.
Would, uh, that's true as long as there's ADA revenue available.
Correct, and,
And right now, we've capped it out, so if we added another classroom, that ADA contribution today would not be there because we're pulling all of the ADA out of the state that we can.
That's a great point. We actually aren't. So, we can serve, uh, this current year, we can serve up to three hundred and thirty-two students in that full-day. We went conservative opening this year, knowing that COVID and the number of families that were choosing not to send their children to school, so we actually are under the number, and so with, um, the information shared with you this evening, that still keeps us within our current allocation for that ADA.
So, if we went up to on the previous one, the twenty-two full-day classrooms,
If we went to the twenty-seven full-day, I would have to recalculate that.
The twenty-two and five, we'd still be inside of the ADA limit?
Oops, sorry. So, looking at this slide, if, uh, we go to the twenty, let's say we go to the twenty full-day and the seven half-day, we would be serving about four hundred students in that full-day. Remember, we have about eighty tuition spots, so that's three hundred and twenty, so we would be fine. We would still be within that number. If you look at the twenty-seven full-day, pulling eighty out, you're correct, we would be over what the state would allocate for us to be reimbursed. Now, there is the Senate Bill eight-one-six on the floor where that number actually increases each year. Um, there's been no change with that right now. And then the twenty-two full-day and the five-half-day, again, that's four hundred and forty. If you take away the eighty for tuition pay, you're about three hundred and sixty. So, we would be a little over, but it's our hope that as a system, we can continue to increase the completion of the free and reduced paperwork because what we know is that far more students in our district qualify for free and reduced than what's filling out the paperwork. And just a side note on that, it's because right now, we currently have universal free food, and so, um, the only reason to fill out that paperwork is families understanding what we as a district get from it. It, it doesn't, it's not as self-serving as it typically would be if we didn't have the universal free.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Our third action step for this success indicator is to create an assessment plan that allows us to show the growth of our students during their preschool experience and track the impact of preschool over time. Our teachers are just finishing their second of three district benchmarks. We have transitioned to documenting our benchmarks and illuminate in order to complete data analysis protocols and track our students over time. We look forward to seeing our students' growth and having the opportunity to not only look at individual and classroom growth, but also different program growth. By being in an illuminate, these same students, like when these students are in kindergarten, first or second grade, those teachers will have access to what their preschool data was. Our stakeholder committee is exploring assessment criteria for quality assurance as well as additional school readiness tools. It has truly been the work of the entire early education department that allows us as a team to stand up here and share the progress we have made up to this point in the school year. We are proud of all we have accomplished and excited about the work that lies ahead. Our committee will continue to work through the feedback provided by our families and staff and work with Mr. Fritz, Dr. Gaddy, and Dr. Sutton regarding a recommendation for the expansion of early education for North Kansas City schools. At this time, I would like to turn it back over to Madam President and Dr. Sutton, who will be leading the board through the next phase of our workshop. Dr. Sutton?
Okay, to, um, debrief that presentation, each one of you have a little, uh, note, some notes here uh, with, uh, workshop notes, glows, grows, and aspirations. And the glows, what we would like you to do is just think about the presentation, and what are some things that, um, you're really excited about as it's related to early education, those things that you want to see us continue to do and move forward with. And then for grows, think about some of those things or opportunities that you may see in terms of improving programming and options for early childhood education. You also have this article, I put a copy, I believe, at each one of your, um, desk areas for the, the building blocks of high-quality early education programs, and there's probably some pieces in there that you may want to reference as well as far as grows or opportunities. Those could all be, also be questions that you have, uh, related to the presentation or to, uh, early education programming, uh, in North Kansas City. And then aspirations, what are some hopes, some dreams, um, some big ideas that you hope we can achieve with early education programming in the coming years? And what I'll do is just give you a minute to kind of complete that individually, and then here in a couple of minutes, I'll have you partner up. Uh, we'll have Dr. Young, Ms. Reinhardt, Dr. Ward over here in a small group, uh, Mr. Harold, Ms. Kauk, uh, will work together, and then Mr. Stone and Ms. Gleason Miller will work together for a few minutes just to share your glows, grows, and aspirations, and then we'll wrap it up with one member from each group, um, just sharing out your, your conversation and then asking any questions, uh, that you may have. I'll give you a minute to work on this individually and then bring you back together here in just a couple of minutes to begin working in groups.
Let's take about five more minutes to wrap up our conversations, five more minutes, and then we'll come back together. Okay, one minute, one minute, we'll begin sharing out. Okay, if we can all come back together here. Back to our seats. So what I'd like for each group to do is just identify one member in your group that would be willing to share the highlights of your conversation. Just a couple glows, some grows, and some aspirations, and of course, any questions that you might have. And we have Dr. Lawson and her team prepared to answer any questions. But we really appreciate your feedback in these conversations. This feedback will allow us to continue to develop our plan, to continue developing our strategies, and really meet those aspirations and hopes and dreams of our Board of Education as it relates to early education programming. So why don't we start with Mr. Stone's group, Ms. Gleason Miller.
Oh, okay.
Great.
So in terms of glows, we were very excited about the partnerships that we've created and how those partnerships are contributing to the success of our program. The, obviously, the increase in students and the increase in opportunities for our students. And really, the, specifically, the thinking outside of the box with regard to the parent educators and just allowing that obstacle to become an opportunity as we took those parent educators and allowed them to be full-time positions and then seeing what that might look like going forward and having more full-time parent educating, or parent educator opportunities. So that's exciting. In terms of growing, obviously, continuing to, to improve on the, the percentage of students that are participating in the programs. And then, you know, just continuing that equity amongst the schools as far as, you know, really being able to look and see what percentage of the students that are in the program, you know, how that, how that looks as far as the individual elementary schools and making sure that that is distributed and that we're getting, we're really getting contact amongst all of the different regions of our very big district. And then more full day, really hoping for more full day opportunities. And I think that kind of, I guess, goes into the aspirations as far as the full day. And then potentially on the aspirations, a southern tier center would be really exciting. And then continuing to have clear indicators and just always having higher expectations and higher standards and holding ourselves accountable to higher standards. I think that, do you have anything to add, T?
Just two quick things, one under glows would be just the impact on learning. And under aspirations, year round, more of that.
Thank you, President Kalkin, Mr. Harold.
Hey, thank you very much. Kind of the glows, again, we really believe that we're offering high-quality preschool programming that really has, has the building blocks of quality that the article talked about. I personally like that we were able to put a program together that has multiple funding sources, has both local, state, and federal sources. That's a lot of times stumbling blocks on why we can't put programs together because we can't secure the funding. And this is a program that has blended funding. We're able to, again, provide small class sizes, have great professional development for our teachers, and more than anything, we're able to, at an early age, identify individual needs for some of our students that might not be taken care of at an early age. So again, we've got early intervention going on. I'll just go glows, or grow, excuse me, glows, grows, and aspirations. Is there anything you want to add to the glows?
The only other thing I would add is I was so pleased that the parent feedback recognized that the teachers and staff, as well as their own student growth, was, in this first year, really the key toward the success. I, I think that's very telling of the quality, so.
As far as our grows, we probably could grow in offering additional support for English language learners as we go forward. We definitely could grow if we could get additional state of funding for our Parents' Teachers Program. At one point in time, Parents' Teachers was 100% funded. And in the last 25 years, that has been significantly decreased. So if we could get the state to, again, allocate more dollars towards the Parents' Teachers Program, we could offer more services to, to our most needy students to be. Probably the grows would be, again, more meaningful family engagement. And also, our grows is to make sure that we kind of examine our mobility rate so that, you know, we're servicing them, so to say, in the zero to four to five years, the first zero to four, four to five years, and make sure that they have every opportunity to remain a student in the North Kansas City School System. Do you want to add anything to grows? Okay, aspirations. First of all, I want to compliment everybody in here, but this district has certainly come miles in the last couple of years specifically to offer these types of quality programs. I'd really like to see our work being recognized as a national model. I think we have all the components of it. I think this is one area where we could toot our horn a little bit louder. And by doing that, it also really puts more of a focus on early childhood education and the different components of that. And another aspiration, I mean, hopes and dreams, is that, really, that all students, zero to five, have opportunities and that, that our school district could work hand in hand with private providers of early childhood education also so that all of, all students coming into kindergarten can have the opportunity to have some type of meaninghood, meaningful early childhood education, either from the school district sector, or a private sector, or the home sector. And then the final aspirations and dreams is just a, you know, it's kind of personal to me, but what I'd say, certainly, it's true at my household as well as most others. But really, our, as a parent, we only have our children for maybe 17 to 18 years. Typically, our, our, our high school seniors, when they graduate, are either 17 to 18 years old. As a parent, that goes extremely fast. So I just want to make sure that we're not, so to say, so to say, stealing the early years away from the parents themselves so that they can bond in those years and also provide some of these same types of opportunities to their, to their children through a home setting and don't necessarily have to come to our type of program in order to gain that. And again, maybe with quality Parents' Teachers Programs, quality family engagement of what's available, either at, in our buildings or the resources for parents, we can all grow together.
There were just a couple of things I wanted to add. I just thought, tracking these cohort of students that start in pre-K through their 12th grade and the success that they, that they have and that we can help look at the benefits of this investment in the community and, and the payoff that it has for each individual child. Additionally, just the, as Paula mentioned, the national model, but the advocacy and legislative support around the importance of this. I think that we can continue to aspire to be very bold in getting information out to and advocate for these kiddos.
Thank you, and our final group, Dr. Young.
So the glows that we had come up with was, first, I really commend you on a great analysis in terms of presenting both the quantitative and the qualitative results. I think that it was definitely a win to see that, on the Likert scale, for all the questions, they were strongly agree on that end in terms of satisfaction with each of the questions that were asked and what they were receiving. And also, the facilities have been amazing. And also, the facilities have been amazing, both for teachers, staff, and also definitely for the students and the families. And also, seeing that there was so much pride that they had rated in being part of the North Kansas City School District and the growth that we've seen is definitely amazing. And anything else that you've had?
Well, I guess the other one would be the supportive community that has emerged that we suspected was there, but definitely has affirmed, both with the research and with their own behavior. Jane, do you have anything to add?
No, I think you guys covered it. I think everybody's pretty much said how excited we are to have had this program, have the quantitative data that we have. So I think it's definitely worthwhile.
Dr. Young, with your glow, really quickly, I should have and I can go back to that qualitative data and just the pride that our families communicated and literally spoke to. I'm so thankful North Kansas City has invested in early education or I'm thankful that this is a focus of our district. So that really is a huge celebration to you all. So I do want you to know, it was specifically named in the survey. So just to speak to that glow just a little bit.
Great. And then the growth that we'd like to see, I think there were very valid points that our members have brought up. Providing full-day programming for more students, for especially parents that work full-time. Also, with how do we address the waiting list? How do we hire more faculty? How do we extend more hours, given, Ms. Reinhardt makes a very good point multiple times about how the schedules are different for parents. And so how do we also accommodate parents that don't work the typical nine-to-five job? Also, having more space. And how do we accommodate for more students? And also overcoming the turnover rate in terms of teachers that, and utilizing the parent as teachers to become full-time educators. So anything else, Dr. Ward?
I think you caught practically all of them. The only one that I had is continuing to expand the marketing. We don't know how many people don't know. And I think anecdotally, we have a belief that there's a significant number of people in the community that are unaware of it. And so I think continuing, and I don't know how we would measure what that informational penetration would be, but that would be nice to know. And part of it is just repetition, we'll get there. Because I think amongst the community of early learners, there is a lot of word-of-mouth that will serve us well.
Aspirations-wise, I think Dr. Ward brought up a good point in terms of if we can model how cost-efficient and cost-effective it is to be able to provide this program and eliminate the other consequences that might happen if we weren't and how much of a cost savings that might be and be able to use those dollars towards expanding the program. So we all know that having early education gives these students a better opportunity in the future and less having, less of other programs that need for remediation and so forth. So I think also, just, I want to take this opportunity to just say happy Lunar New Year for many of us that are in culturally, that this is our new year and that this Early Childhood Education Center addresses many of those who are from diverse backgrounds. And it's apparent 55% of the students may be in that category, but I'd like to see that kind of, how diverse are we represented in this early childcare center? And then just being able to have that communication was one of the aspects that I saw was an opportunity for us to figure out how best to communicate what different languages. I'm pleased to see that the survey was sent out in various languages, but I'm wondering how better communication might be able to be provided, translating a lot of the evidence into what they might be able to find useful and practical. So of course, like, if we can introduce foreign language early on, that would be ideal for students to start partaking in, you know, songs and activities in a foreign language. And starting at that point would be very, I think, productive and it would be really helpful for the students to grow in that area. Anything else?
Jane?
No? Okay.
I guess a couple of other things I'd.
No, sorry.
Okay.
A couple of other things I'd add to the list that we discussed. One of them is, what do we think our ultimate demand is? And then how do we build facilities, staff, and program to meet that ultimate demand? Because, I mean, you've got one year of growth. It's, you know, from a data point, you can go anywhere with one. And we don't know where it is. And I think at the same time, I think somebody mentioned earlier, working with the people in Jeff City to make sure that the cap on ADA gets moved up. If the governor's going to tout the importance of early childhood education, we need to have help funding it. And so hopefully, he'll get on board and work with us and with the legislature to get that done. And then I think the other question is, how much of our program should be center-based versus in the schools? And, you know, we've got one year of experience. It's hard to sort some of that out yet. And I guess I would cycle back to say, what's been achieved in the last 18 months or year, whichever way you want to count, is amazing. And so kudos and congratulations to the staff and all of the people who have been working very hard. And under normal circumstances, this would be amazing. And then we can just throw that little curveball of COVID into it and it gets really amazing. So thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for your feedback. This has been really beneficial for us and we just can't thank the Board of Education enough for your support in early education. And as many of you stated, the investment in this programming and for early childhood is going to pay dividends for the rest of these lives, rest of the lives for the kids and the families that are involved and is truly changing the trajectory for kids in this community. And without a doubt, and I know Dr. Clemens has said it before, it's one of the absolute best investments that we can make in our community and our kids. So thank you so much for that. Thank you, Dr. Lawson and your team, for all of your work. It really has been incredible work. They have been really working towards developing strategies and, and looking at these indicators of student success ever since the Board approved them and had a group of representative stakeholders to come together and develop action plans. And they just keep, keep plugging away. It's been really, really good work. So thank you so much for that. And Dr. Ward has been a part of that team as well. So we really appreciate his efforts and, and support in, in early childhood programming as well.
I think Ms. Gleason Miller had another point she wanted to make.
Yes.
I was just going to build on what you were saying about, just the question and maybe just looking into it a little bit, just the difference between the center-based versus the school-based. Like, what are the, some of the benefits and what are, you know, I'm not sure how we measure that or what kind of measurements there would be, but, you know, kind of seeing. I think that's an interesting comparison to think about. And again, I think there's so many, like, doing scientific research and not to stand up here and say that I can speak to all of those things, but there are different factors. So our school-based is all full-day, all four-year-olds. Our center-based is half-day blended. So we can compare and absolutely, but I also think just honoring what is in every room and just then seeing the growth of those over time. And I think that's where it's going to really help us, right? So when we can see when these kids are in third and fourth grade, which program were they provided? Which one do we see the greatest benefit from? I think some of it we can look at quickly and then some of it, I think, is going to be more of that longitudinal, longen, I'm not going to try to be smart tonight. The longer study.
And I think too, I think that it's really important to respect what some of our neighborhoods have asked us to do. There are, there are neighborhoods within our school district that would prefer to have pre-K within their own neighborhood school because they're very strong communities. I'll give you Grace Moore as an example. The community of Grace Moore has asked us several times if, if their kids could not go to the center and go to their, their school. And I think we're open to classrooms there?
Yes, we have two at Grace Moore.
Two at Grace Moore, and I think they're, they're having a lot of success there. So there's so many factors that play into what our community asks us to do or what we, we know is, is right by them, that that, that always plays into it. And I would just say, thanks, thank you to the Board of Education for having enough trust in, in our team to, to make this work. I mean, it was a crazy idea, coming and saying, hey, can we buy a Hobby Lobby and a Price Shop or we think we could really do something for, for three- and four-year-olds there? And it took a lot of trust for you to say, go ahead and do it. And, and certainly, Dr. Evans and his team for putting it together and Katie and her team for, for educating our young people. Matt for always able to, to come up with a little more money. We're, we're always asking. And Tammy for going down to Jeff City and, and just, you know, Brenda Shields and Lauren Arthur and those folks that continue to put things forward for us, trying to get additional dollars. And of course, Dr. Gaddy, who really worked hard to try to hire all these people and move them around throughout the district. So a total team effort, but I think it goes a long ways to just say, thank you to the Board of Education for trusting us to buy a couple of old stores and, and then letting us take our dreams and see where they landed. So I can't wait for the future. I can't wait for the future, it's going to be very cool.
Dr. Lawson, I just want to thank you and your team for being here tonight and hope that you will convey also to the team back home at the center and, and all your outreach sites that how much we appreciate the work that's gone into this year. And as Dr. Ward had said, in, and on top of COVID, haven't missed a beat. Just continue to press forward and do the right thing for our kids. And I, we thank you for that very, very much. Are there any other questions, comments? Thank you very much. And that is the adjournment of our meeting this evening. Our next meeting will be a full board regular meeting on February 15th in this room at 7:00 PM. From this point, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, have a safe drive home.